I don't have.
I'm going to stand up, do the pledge of allegiance, please. You guys all join me?
Come on, you guys. Touch up. Come on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Perfect. Perfect, perfect. Okay, study session. I'm gonna let you lead us off here.
Okay, sounds good. So this is the first of four study sessions that the board has scheduled to precede a regular board meeting. And at this first one, I had come up at the June retreat and a couple times since then that the board would like the opportunity to review the current performance indicators. And, you know, we can talk about making adjustments and updates to those. So at the end of the last board meeting, I gave you hard copies of the current document. And I've got them here too, so let me get these. And I'll put them up there, please, so people that are watching can see. And then I gave you a draft update. And on the draft update, there were some updates that I'm suggesting to some of the goal areas. We'll walk through those. And then also some formatting changes, just to simplify the document, make it a little shorter. So it doesn't have so many pages. And then, since that time, I took a closer look at some of the indicators for growth and proficiency for student learning with my team. And so I have a version two draft update, which you haven't seen yet, that we can take a look at. So clearly no formal decisions or anything that'll be made tonight. It's a lot of time for board discussion and direction. And then I'll bring an updated version back to you at the next board meeting for formal approval. Then we can get the actual whole strategic plan for 2023, 24, the whole document updated and published. So my suggestion would be that we start with the non-student growth and proficiency goal areas and spend like no more than half the time talking about those. And then spend, you know, a good chunk of time, the rest of the half of the time, talking about the student growth and proficiency targets. So does that work? Okay, so for the first goal area, all students are safe, known, and valued. You can see when you look at the current document compared to these draft updates, I'm not suggesting any updates in that area, although the board might have ideas for updates. I'll put it up there. Yeah, in just a second. Thank you. So we lean on the student survey, the Safe, Known, and Valued survey, and attendance data and discipline data to help inform that goal of all students are safe, known, and valued. So I don't really have any suggested updates to that one.
Can I ask a question on that one? Are we just asking questions as we go?
This is just, this is just a word. This is the learning session here.
Is it two absences a month? Is that a state number or is that a district selected number? The reason I ask is I'm not, I've read this book, so I've got it there now. Two a month, sometimes seems like there's more than that. Like I might be sick one day already and it's two and a half days. So, you know, is that a state number?
It is a state number. So, you know, we do, the state does have on their report card, on the OSPI report card, indicators and things that they look at. And so they're, and they're consistent right across districts because you can compare your district's data to another district. So that is a state one. That's how they define regular attendance. So that's why we use it.
And is that, just for clarification, is that excused absence or unexcused absence? Or is it just an absence is an absence?
It's just an absence is an absence. And I think the thinking is, right, any, any time you're away from school, you're not learning. And so it's not a punitive thing about, you know, dinging kids whether they're excused or not. It's just tracking and paying attention to and wanting to encourage regular attendance at school.
There was something, I don't think it was on the OSPI report card, but it was something that Rektal had out. And it talked about the minutes that you're losing if that happens every month. And it was a, it was, you know, a large number of minutes that you're missing in a class. And not just that you can't do all the work outside of class. Because you probably have your kids make up what they missed, but some things cannot be made up outside of class. And so it was talking about the loss of when you're not there, what you're missing.
I don't think that, I don't think it changed necessarily now. I think we probably want to get, come next year, mix on the data that we're trending on significantly. We, that makes seventy again, maybe it's more true for a little bit of the time.
In terms of the target being ninety percent?
Yeah, I mean, if we go from eighty-seven, eighty-two to seventy-five, we're back to seventy-five. I mean, it's not a realistic goal at this point in time.
Right.
Because since COVID's come and gone, more people have.
That's true.
Not, you know, or they've gotten, my kid sneezes more, so I'm keeping him in today, or whatever it may be.
Right. Yeah. And that's a good point, you know, on the targets. The targets were set, obviously, especially when we get into the proficiency targets, we want a hundred percent of our kids meeting grade level standards. The targets are not the goal, right? The targets are where do we think we can sort of progress to next based on where we are?
The definition on the attendance, just on the state report card, is an average. So really, we're looking for kids who are missing over nine months period of time, less than.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification, Matt. Yeah.
It's two days a month, please.
Just in, just in general, the performance indicators, the two things that I guess I would like to kind of keep in mind is, one, the kind of game sort of alluded to a little bit, like achievable, achievable. Like how achievable are they? I almost would suggest looking at the past numbers and seeing what the highest mark we've ever got. And then set it like one percentage above that, you know, because that's like, that's achievable. We've already been really close to that. And that to me, you know, so rather than, I know goals are different. But yes, goals that everybody's at a hundred percent. But I want things to achieve. And then the other thing is just, just, just a big broad brush over everything we're gonna look at today. And then, and then consistent, consistent like stats. Because sometimes we look at stats and it's like, okay, well, this time is, this, this stat is a growth thing. And this stat is a percentage of this other thing, you know, it's like, I know for me, it's sometimes hard for me to take that stat and look, look at it across everything because like, they always seem like they're changing a lot, you know what I mean? So some sort of a consistent stat that I can look at, we can look at and say like, okay, in this stat, we're constantly, what's the bar graph or the, you know, those are the consistency and achievability.
Yeah, no, that's good. And I think for this particular goal, you know, it's hard to know on the attendance piece, like why, why so much lower than last year? But we know the previous year, the way attendance was taken was really inconsistent. And, you know, COVID kind of, that's why we have a big note here. It's like, how do we reconcile all this with COVID? But, you know, maybe we can see like what Gabe was saying on some of these, like where do we land this year? And then go, is that, does that target need to be adjusted?
Yeah.
But I feel like these, at least on this one, I know what you're saying when we get into the growth and proficiency targets. And maybe some of the suggested edits might address some of what you're getting at. And the other one like here though, in this particular goal with discipline rate, that's another thing. I think it was maybe artificially low. And it's kind of hard with discipline too, because sometimes the discipline rate can show that we're addressing discipline issues, right? We're, we're, we are dealing with discipline. We still though want to the greatest extent possible, right? Look at alternatives to out of school suspension, because when kids aren't in school, they're not learning. But if kids are a safety issue for other kids, then they really can't be at school. So that one's a little, but it was, I think artificially sort of low because when we weren't in school for full time, obviously, we didn't have a lot of discipline.
Yeah, it's almost better to just take out the COVID years and look at the years previous to that or something.
Well, when it says discipline rate, what constitutes discipline?
So that means exclusionary discipline. It is out of school suspension. Or expulsion, right? So it's not any, it doesn't mean consequences.
Just not in school.
Right.
Yeah, almost discipline needs to be broken up a bit, you know, because like what you just said, in one regard, it's you want to make sure we are disciplining kids. I mean, we hear about bullying and harassment. You want to make sure we are, we're on top of that, we're getting, getting those kids disciplined. At the same time, of course, you want kids to be in school. So almost like you almost did a couple different, you need to break that, we almost need to break that down into three or four different categories, probably.
Okay, that's good too. Yeah, and this one too, it does, this, this, this particular target is also what the state looks at. So it's also from the OSPI report card.
So you could match up.
But when we're presenting on discipline, we can certainly dig into more depth than just, you know, exclusionary discipline.
Yeah. Yeah, because then again, I don't even know if this is, I want this higher or lower.
Right, right. Well, the.
I mean, you want, you want zero, but the thing, you know, but again, does that mean you're not disciplining anybody?
Right, we don't want it to be zero. We don't want the message to be, don't. Right, that's not what we want.
Exactly. So that's why I'm like, do we want, what's our goal of the district here?
Yeah. And we got the let, the four percent because that's the state average. So kind of looking at, you know, what it's looking like across the board and not wanting to be, you know, an outlier, I guess, statewide. Kind of look at what, so we can look at that a little bit more. But that's where it came from.
Has, one last question. Has the, have the requirements for DEI, and that, has that increased over these couple of years or decreased? Are the requirements, the amount of focus that we're putting into diversity, equity, inclusion? Is that, are we putting more and more of an emphasis into this over these, is that, is our emphasis increasing or decreasing?
Well, I would say, so we know that there's the state requirement that started, I have to think, three years ago. So three years ago, the state started providing funding for a professional development day that has to focus on either CCDEI or SAL, social emotional learning, right? So it flip flops every other year. So maybe in answer to your question, you know, there's been a, an emphasis in that way where there's training. I think that, I don't think that there's necessarily, I feel like there's always been an emphasis on creating safe environments for kids. We've got anti, you know, harassment and discrimination policies that are longstanding policies. And so, you know, asking kids if they feel safe, included, and welcomed, right, on that annual survey, I think is a good indicator. Again, I don't know if it was artificially inflated a little bit during COVID because like, of course, when everybody's not in school full time, you're not gonna have as many incidents of student to student behavior and that kind of thing. But it's still, I mean, eighty-five percent, I feel like is, is a strong result at this point. Does, I don't know if that answered your question, Mike? I'm not really sure.
I just, you know, you know, I have this philosophy, you've heard me say it many times, that what you focus on, you get more of. You know, I feel like you're focusing constantly on, and you're always talking about this or any, anything, you're gonna just get more of that. So it seems like as soon as that log or that demand comes into place and now we have to start training now, our numbers are dropping. I mean, that's.
And I don't, you know, I don't think, I couldn't draw any kind of correlation or causal effect between, you know, a one or two percentage point and, and that's requirement from the state. I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure that, I don't have any data to really draw those connections.
Yeah, we just have this, right, that it is dropping.
Yeah, and it's, and we also, I think when we look at percentages, you know, it's like what's, what's significant? And I don't, I don't know that like a one percent change up or down is a significant percentage. And I mean, I could, I need to probably go back to my stats books and look at like standard deviation and that kind of thing. But I think, you know.
Just something to think about and to keep in mind, and it'd be better for us to not be the other direction.
Absolutely. But also, I think even like if we're up a percent, it's not like, yeah, we're up a percent. Because it's really not, you know, and you always want to look at a trend like three or more years and then kind of look at what's happening over that. So, I mean, you're right, it's down four percent from the COVID year. But again, we just have a little bit of funky data.
Something to watch, yeah, something to watch for.
Yeah. Okay, so some notes. I guess I would summarize on the first goal, just looking at our time. I have some notes, but maybe nothing significant, like we should take this out and put something else in right now, is what I'm hearing.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Okay. If we go, we're gonna skip, right, goal two for a moment, we're gonna come back to that. Goal three, that's another area where, right now, there's no change between current and kind of some of these draft updates. I think these are, are pretty good targets really for us to be looking at. We're looking at student, family, and staff data aggregated together. That might, I don't know if that's something we could break out, if it would be more helpful to see what did students tell us compared to staff, compared to families. So that might be one suggestion. The second indicator is based on waitlist for dual language. And the third indicator, that's one we get from, off the OSPI report card to track. It's dual credit completion, because we want students in high school to take dual credit opportunities. That means they're taking college level coursework and getting credit for it. And then, of course, graduation. So thoughts about this one?
I would like to see that disaggregation on that. Because, you know, parents, parents are the ones that are filling that out for the families generally. And if there's a big difference between one group and another, then we would want to find out, you know, why that is and how to make things happen in that area, I guess. Or sometimes it's just perception. And we've had that before, where a group has had a different perception based on just how things didn't seem to them. Once things are explained, then perceptions can change.
Do others have thoughts about that one, about breaking out and reporting students, families, staff separately?
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, I mean, I would.
Okay.
So then we're, then we're removing the student readiness for post-secondary education, you're taking that off on your version, your version two.
I'm saying, so we would, we wouldn't aggregate up students, families, and staff into one percentage?
No, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm somewhere else. I apologize.
You had me so confused. All of a sudden, I was like, what?
Yes, we're, no, yeah, I think we should desegregate that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was, I jumped, I jumped ahead. So please continue, I apologize.
It kept us awake though, Mike.
I don't want to, I've got to throw a couple of curveballs on this one.
On to the next, you asked for the next question, because I think I've shared this multiple times. I think having a hundred percent is not realistic, especially like, if our goal is a hundred percent of students graduating in five years. And we, I don't think I've ever seen a number above ninety percent. I just personally think a hundred percent is never realistic.
This is a good example. Like, I would say, what's the highest rate we've ever graduated? What's the highest rate we've ever had?
I don't know enough to have my head, only have what's here, but for five years. For some of our, for the big three high schools, because we look at that. So you have to remember, right?
What my schools have higher percent.
Say this carefully so it doesn't come off the wrong way. This, the nearly a hundred would probably, is, I think, probably achievable, I mean, close to it, for Kennebec Southridge and Kamaiakin, because they're in the nineties, mid nineties right now. We've got alternative schools where students typically are entering that school being credit deficit. Not always, but often, right? And just different, you know.
Challenges and stuff.
Yeah, it's a different kind of setting and serving a potentially different student population. They're not, they're not close to the hundred percent.
So my, I guess, so my thought of this is, this, this right here is the district's goal, right? And we're not even close to a hundred percent total.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven. So, so if we had a more realistic goal of ninety as a district, we, we could get there, right? We're never gonna get to a hundred. I mean, we want to, but we're, we're just, we're just not. But the schools, the high schools, if they're at mid ninety or they're already approaching it, then they should have a goal at the school that pushes them up a percent or two percent, right? And then, and then that's their stretch goal that they're shooting for. And, and those potential schools that are, aren't close to there or whatever, I don't know, lower numbers and all that. But they should have a goal they're, they're shooting for, but collectively as a district, I, I wouldn't say anything over, until we're over ninety percent, I wouldn't have a goal.
I would say one point higher than the highest we've ever gotten.
So guys, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt you here, because I think this also needs to be, we also need to give our kids hope. Because if we're gonna say that, you know, we failed ten percent of you, but we hit our numbers, this, this isn't a business. This is, we're educating our children, we're trying to move them forward. We want to say, look, we believe that every child here can graduate from college or from high school. And we want to make sure and do everything we can to hit that goal. Because we need to show the community that, hey, we believe in every kid. Because I think we're gonna, we're gonna set a really bad example if we say, hey, look, alternative schools, you know, if we get eighty percent through, you know, we did our part, but we hit our number. And I think that's really, I think we're sending the wrong message if we're saying that twenty percent failure is acceptable. And so I, I think that it's really, really important, and it's something that I firmly believe in, that every, we should strive for a hundred percent graduation of all these kids, whether it's four, five, six years, whatever it is. I think that sends the right message to our students that we believe that every one of them can succeed and we should be doing everything we can to get a hundred percent. Now, I'm with you. Now, realistically, we're probably never gonna hit a hundred percent. But we need to show the community that we believe in all the kids.
I mean, I think we do. I, I just think we're, every year we're saying, hey, guys, a hundred percent. Oh, we fell again this year because we only got eighty-six percent, or oh, we got this. That's what I'm saying, like, we do believe every student, we want every student to graduate. We, like, I don't think there's a question about that. I just think when we're, when we're telling people this is our goal and we don't meet the goal, we're also telling people, I think that we're failing to meet our goals.
But a goal is, is something I, I'm working toward. And if I look at this, we're making progress, right? And so like, I know we've had, you know, different administrators talk to us. This is an area that seemed to be problematic for our students to graduate or get passing grades. So then what does cabinet do? They start working on some things that make that happen. So I, I agree with Mike. It's like, I'm not sure how that looks to a potential person who wants to move into an area to say, oh, well, we've got, I'm making up a number, ninety-two percent. And I look at the surrounding districts and I say, you know, we are committed to a hundred percent. Yeah, we're not there, but we're committed to it. I'm not sure that I would maybe choose a district. I mean, all things being equal, that might not be something that looks really good.
So I think that you have, I think that the number of people probably will look at is how many you are actually graduating.
Yes.
Okay, not the goal.
I think you look at both. What are you committed to? Commitment is a difference.
Okay, so, but what I'm saying is, if I'm doing a kind of sport or something and I'm trying to run a six-minute mile, and I run, and I'm like, dude, there's just no way I can hit that. That is just unachievable. Then it just takes a little bit of my drive away. But if I'm like close to it, and I think I can actually hit that, then I'm gonna push, 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 push. And I believe that that is going to give us a higher graduation rate. And what really matters is, is not the goal, it's actually the kids who are graduating. So what gets you a hot, what gets you more kids graduating, actually graduating? I think it's in a realistic goal that people are pushing and fighting to get, rather than something that they just know they can't get. So they just maybe, human nature plays into there. So I think the most important number is not what the goal is. I think the most important number is what the actual number of kids that are graduating is. And if we can increase that, I think that's what we do.
I think you guys are all making really good points from my perspective. And I think that this one in particular is a little challenging because all the rest of these are really targets that are different from the goal, right? Where in this particular one, it's convoluted because our mission is all students graduate, that's why we exist. It's hard to write a target that's under a hundred percent when you're talking about graduation, when it's your like mission as an organization. So that's why it is what it is. But every other target, like to your point, Gabe, if the district target is, you know, sixty-five percent, because district-wide right now, we're at sixty percent, for example, and we want to improve by five, we have to, and we continue to tell the schools, that doesn't mean that's your target. Because, because if that's the district average, we're gonna have schools above that and below that. And you have to set your school level goals and targets based on where you are as a school. It's not say, oh, good, I'm, you know, we're eighty percent at my school, so I don't, we don't have to worry about this anymore. I've met the district target. No, no, no. You still want to be focusing and you, you set your school target based on where you are. Which is kind of what you were saying about graduation, right? Like if you're already in the mid nineties, right? But if you're at thirty percent now or something like that, like it's, you can't realistically think you're gonna go from thirty to a hundred in a year.
No, I don't think anyone would ever.
Right, yeah.
You shouldn't think that, for one, right? But if you're at thirty, you should think, how do I get to forty?
Exactly.
And then when I get to forty, how do I get to fifty? And if you're at ninety-five, then you should think, how do I get to ninety-six?
And they do that. Each individual building has that.
Right. And so why aren't we doing that? Because there's no way, no possible way we will graduate a hundred percent of our kids in five years. The data is conclusive that we're mid eighties. So are we moving the needle every year by saying a hundred percent is our goal? Or will we move the needle if we have a realistic goal that maybe we can get to? Because right now, every school looks at this, and I guarantee you, they're like, we're not gonna get to a hundred percent.
Yeah. And so, and at the school level, we keep working with them to say, you, for all of these targets, you look at where you are. And then you, you know, in your school improvement plan, you set your target based on that. Now, so I, let me, I've got some ideas based on what you're saying. And so let me, because I'm looking at time, if you guys are okay with it, let me take what you have. I'll, I'll do some revisions on this one, let you see some updates. And there's, it's, it's not like there's a huge, you know, if what I bring to you next time and what you see next time still doesn't hit the mark, we can still talk about it. But I, I feel like I've got enough of your feedback on this one to maybe put a couple thoughts together on paper. Okay? All right. So now we're gonna flip to the back page.
And are we looking at, which version do you want us, so I'm looking at the right one? The draft update? Is that the one we're kind of looking at?
Well, I have draft version two up on the screen.
Okay, that's fine.
And, and then it's like kind of comparing the first one, right, to, to the, yeah. So you're, you're, let's just see. What you're gonna see here, all right, well, let's just keep going. To the family, all families or key partners is the goal that we're looking at.
Back page, versions, draft.
Yeah. I see a little typo here, but. So on this particular one, comparing what we have now, like, I haven't suggested any changes to this one. We look at our, our family survey data. And, and that's what we're reporting out here on those three indicators. So do you have any, those seem to be working? I don't know if the targets you feel are set too high.
Are they, is ninety-five realistic? That's, again, I would just ask because if we're constantly hitting mid, like, we're, we're, last three years, we're in the low eighties, and we're saying ninety-five is our goal, is that realistic? Because I also don't want people to look at these goals, and I don't want, I don't want our admin staff to look at them, and our teachers, and our principals, and all us to look at these things and be like, we're not gonna get to that goal. So it's not realistic. So again, my, just my question is, are these realistic?
Right. And so one question I have, if, if, if what we want is continuous improvement, and knowing that the higher, the closer you get to a hundred percent, the more difficult it is to, to grow, right? What, what do you think would be reasonable percentage increases from year to year, district-wide? Like, if instead we were gonna, instead of setting a, a target like ninety-five percent. Like, if, if instead we were gonna, instead of setting a, a target like ninety-five percent, if we said, okay, if we were at eighty-seven percent this year, would we want to be at, like, eighty-nine, I mean, it's two percent? I'm just maybe thinking about that.
I'll say it again, I think that where you start off with is you say, what's the highest we've been, and you go one higher than that. Because, I mean, again, if you're kind of going to that philosophy of like, we want, you know, you'd want every single stat to be, every goal to be a hundred percent, like, well, because we believe that, you know, we want every kid to feel respected, every single one. We don't want to show anybody that we're not gonna respect, you know? So it's like, that's just not like, it's not really a goal, you know, yeah.
So on these family ones, because we just started doing the family survey in 2021, we actually have, like, the, the highest we've ever been, right? Like, we have that here. So for the first one, it was last year, eighty-eight percent.
Eighty-nine, eighty-three, eighty-one.
So, so, so like, look at the second one, family engagement with schools. Eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-two.
So you put that one at eighty-three.
Okay, yeah.
And then the first one, eighty-six, eighty-eight, eighty-seven, so eighty-eight's the highest, so set it at eighty-nine. Next one, let's set it at eighty-one.
That, that's, my, my personal thought is, that's the way you're looking at it. We're saying, okay, this is where we're at, so we're going up roughly a percent to two percent a year, right? So let's put the goal at eighty-nine or ninety, that's realistic, right? And then when we get there, now we can celebrate that as a district, that we met this goal, and now we can increase it, right? Maybe it's ninety-one, maybe it's ninety-two, but, and yes, as you get closer to a hundred, it's going to be harder to maintain that, but, well, we may never hit this ninety-five goal. We don't know, I mean, we just don't know. So do every, every year, do we keep pulling in mid-eighties and missing what our goal targets are, or do we set real, like, more realistic and hit them and, and continue to increase year after year? That's how I look at it, but.
I would like to see it, instead of just going up one, you know, one percent, I'd like to, so, if you take the first one, families respected, so if we say, you know, eighty-seven, I'd like to see something like ninety, but that's, if we're gonna start adjusting this down to try and make these more realistic. I don't think a one percent, you know, that doesn't seem like much of a, that should be pretty doable. And so especially that. So I'd like to see it a little more difficult than just one or two percentage points.
I'm gonna go ninety.
Can I ask, because I know we haven't been doing this one in particular very long, but the other ones, graduation rates, et cetera, did we start at a lower rate and move that up over time? Do we start at eighty-five or something and move it up as we met those?
Do you mean the targets?
Yeah.
No, the targets were established initially and haven't changed.
So these have always been the same? And I know you probably weren't here when this was all.
No, I'm, I, no, I was, this, yes, yeah, this didn't exist for me being here.
Because we've seen, there were some similar kinds of things, but maybe not as, you know, all put together as this. So when you made those choices?
With the board.
One hundred percent, right, and ninety. But when you, when your group wrote it up and then we reviewed it, do you remember the, the rationale for choosing that particular percentage?
We, we hadn't had the first initial data yet, so no, just aiming high, striving for high, and striving for excellence.
So was this based on, like, you know, scientific data, other places that we've seen, other districts, other similar things?
I'm, I'm just trying to come up.
Yeah, no, yeah. You know, in special education, you always aim high and you work your way and you, you revamp if you need to. But, you know, going lower, it's like, oh, we haven't been able to get there, so we're gonna move it down because then we think we can get there. It's, to me, that's somewhat, and I don't, I don't know the right word, but it's somewhat of a defeatist attitude, and I don't wanna. Well, I'm, that's why I'm asking, where are our numbers, why? Because we do have a hundred in some.
We always have, never see a goal at a hundred, then.
So I'm just wondering where we.
Yeah, and so, again, kind of differentiating between goal and target. Our goals are all families, all means a hundred percent.
That's right.
Our goals are all students, all means a hundred percent. But the targets are, how do you incrementally grow and progress toward that goal of all, right? Knowing that, yeah, those are, a hundred percent are, that's why the targets aren't setting a hundred percent, the goals are all. So, but the ninety-five percent in these particular ones, again, we didn't have any baseline data really to, to work from, and just wanting it to be as close to, you know, a hundred is, is possible, so.
So the, the, in this particular section, this, this is, this is the way I, I think of it. So we've got three years of baseline data now, right? So we had goals, now we've got the data to monitor and, and set. So similar to what Mike was saying, so like, I look at this and say, okay, the first one, a target would be ninety, the middle one, eighty-five, and maybe eighty-five. And then we would have the next round of data to show where we're at, right? And then we would, again, come back to this next year and either adjust that target goal because we've made it, or it's still a reasonable target goal. And then this exercise would have to happen more regularly, like, almost on a yearly or bi-yearly basis to change these goals. Because if I'm understanding correctly, these haven't changed since this, the target goal, the targets haven't changed since this rollout, right?
Targets haven't, haven't changed with a couple of tiny exceptions here and there, tiny tweaks, but no, the targets have stayed the same. Okay.
So that, that's the way I see it, is we need to, we need to get the realistic metrics here, and then each year, we need to verify, yep, they're realistic, we're still tracking, that's a good goal, or maybe it comes up at like ninety-three percent, we're like, wow, we did great, let's, let's stretch our goal a little bit. Because that's usually how we do it outside of education.
Should we keep going? I'm just looking at the time, okay? All right, so if we can, we're gonna try to spend about five minutes on this, the next, so we can spend a little more time, about fifteen minutes on the, the academic targets. So there's a typo on the draft update, it should say the, the staff-focused goal, it just says results, but this is where we look at injuries. You'll see that those have changed a little over time, as we reported, we adjusted the way we, we are reporting them. I don't know if you remember that from the last presentation that, that Molly gave, but this data is updated to reflect the way that we're reporting. Then we've got a staff survey data indicator, staff diversity, and staff retention. So I'm not suggesting any changes over that, except for we've removed the flu clinics.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We still do the flu clinics, it's just not part of our, you know, indicators. And then, like I said, changed the, we took off the completing the safety training because that's a requirement for employment, so.
It has to be done.
Yeah, and then changed the way that we're reporting injuries.
I'm not sure where it would, if it would fit in, you know, this, this pink or the green section, but I do think it would be great if, if families could, beginning of the year and end of the year, have just a quick survey about the teacher, like, you know, like, so for example, like, maybe one of my kids has a teacher, and I, we feel like maybe we're not quite getting the communication, and she doesn't realize that, and then it's a quick survey, and the survey comes back with seventy-five percent of the parents feel like they're not being quite communicated with. That happens at the beginning of the year, now the teacher's like, oh, oh, man, maybe I need to, I didn't realize that. Then he or she can work on that, and then at the end of the year, there's another quick survey, six or eight questions, and how, how they do, they approve. I think, I don't know.
I don't know if that fits.
It doesn't really fit here, I know, but.
In this particular.
I, I, I just supposed to say, I mean, I don't, I don't really know if it fits in here, but that would be a really good.
We do ask a, a question in the family survey. You're gonna see some of that data tonight, as a matter of fact, about, you know, staff communicates with me and things like that. It's more global, and we, and then, you know, people could, can use the open comment box there. And if we were gonna require every teacher to, to do that kind of a survey, it would be a negotiated item with the teachers association, so we couldn't just, like, do it.
Is this staff diversity, that's increased by two percent annually, or greater than, just greater than two percent?
Yeah.
The diversity of the whole staff.
Yes, but are we, so, are we saying we want to increase greater than two percent? So we want to go from four to six? And then to eight, or we want to be above two percent?
It's increasing by two percent annually, so that's, yeah, it's like.
So we want to go from four percent to six percent?
Six, yeah.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure I knew.
Yep.
And then, and we want to do that, and this is obviously a statewide, is this attached to a statewide thing? Or is the district, we, we made this own, this own goal?
I might have to follow up if it's state or, or like, federal, like, we have, we're required to complete a, a report, and it's called, Doug, what is the report that we're, that we complete every year on, like, staff diversity? It's the, is it affirmative action report? But don't we do like an affirmative action report as part of, is that part of state reporting or federal reporting?
It's a state.
Okay.
And so what is the state's demands?
I don't know, I, I can follow up and, because I don't want to put Doug in this box, I don't think he knows off the top of his head, but. I don't think the state sets a target, and like they do with some of these other report card areas, like attendance and things like that.
It's not goal-based, it's just information-based.
But they report out on it.
Track our, track our, you know, gender, race, all that stuff, or appointments.
And I, I have no, I don't care if it's a boy, girl, you know, I don't care the nationality, I really don't care. All I care is if there's a good teacher, right? So what do we do when we're, when we're in a situation, we have a teacher that may be better than the other teacher, but there's an equity, diversity situation?
There's not a quota situation going on here. We are always hiring the most highly qualified candidate. I think, you know, nationwide, organization-wide, though, you know, you, you, you do want to look at the makeup of your employees and, and, and if, if there is not diversity amongst your staff, it's just a question of why would that be? You know, what, why, what might be contributing to that? But it's, it's, we're always wanting to hire the best person for the job.
Yeah, I hope it is, and I, and I think that's probably true, I'm sorry. I think merit-based is the way to do it. So then, okay, so if we are just strictly merit-based, then, then like, why are we, why, why do we have a goal to increase it by two, two percent? You know, like, if, if, if that's really not one of the factors, if, if it's just strictly who's the best teacher, or whatever, staff member, then why are we setting a goal to increase diversity when?
If we have an all-white teaching program, what's that, what's that set? When we have a, we have a school district that has, what's our, what's our?
Sixty percent?
Yeah, I was gonna say fifty-five percent, sixty percent.
Non-white.
You know, non-white, and it's.
It's just a matter of wanting your workforce to reflect your community, is essentially what the idea is behind it.
One of, one of the things, Doug, and you can straighten out what I'm gonna say, but you've changed where you go and, and how you look for new teachers, and you've broadened your places where you go. So we're still gonna find great teachers, but we've broadened where we might be looking for teachers that are different than we have in our own community.
Yeah, I think this goal, we're all on, we fixed that. Our goal is to hire the best teacher, but our goal is also to hire people that represent our community. So how do you, we don't have quotas and all that, but how do you make sure that your hiring practices, your recruiting practices are such that you get a diverse, quality candidate pool? Now, for their, your, your goal is really to get diversity in, raise people from all over, and then to our pool, so we can select them.
That, whatever we're calling our bridge program that we're doing with our students, and then paras and many to teachers?
Throw your own programs so we can keep our kids that want to be teachers in our community, so it would be like that, sure.
Show students what's available out there.
So is there a suggestion for that one?
Yeah, I mean, so we're, I, I think it's great that we're, that we're expanding where we look, I think it's great that, I don't know why we're making the assumption that if we just hired based on merit, that they'd all be white. I don't know why there's that assumption, that's what we're saying. We're saying like, well, I, I don't think that's true. I think that if we're really looking at, at every single person, and we're just hiring by merit, I think that it's just going to look like the community. That's, I don't really think one race is better than the other, or more competent, or gonna get hired more or less, I just don't think that.
So if that's, if the way it's phrased here is, is problematic, you know, I could think of a way to phrase it where it's, we're paying attention to it, and, you know, but I, but like, maybe it doesn't have the, that percentage by it, or something.
I don't think it's problematic at all.
Okay.
I just don't think we're increasing by two percent based on the data, so. Again, again, I think this is the one we, you look at next year where we come in, and you gotta reevaluate it.
Okay.
Because this goal would mean if we started at three, then we would have been to five, and then we'd be at seven, and we're not, we're not there. So again, it's just another, maybe it's, maybe it's staff diversity is greater than X percent, or some, you know, different wording, but.
I like the idea of having it be something we look at and pay attention to, but not a, not a goal that we're expressly trying to hit. Because I think that's where it comes, it becomes problematic when you're trying to hit a goal, and you're, now you're picking one candidate over another candidate, this list, that, do you, would you agree that's problematic if you're doing that?
Except for they just said that they're not choosing one over another based on anything other than the skills of this person.
Then why have a goal? Why are we having a goal?
Because you, you said you get better.
Honestly, I think federally, like, I think they'll.
Well, that's what I asked, is it a federal, is it a state goal?
Let me, yeah, let me.
I don't think it's a state-specific goal, but I think if you're, if you're workforce, like, if the state looks at your workforce, and they, and the state determines that it's not diverse enough, then they will audit and look into your hiring practices and blah, 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 all that stuff, so I don't.
We have federal dollars, et cetera.
Which is why I led with that.
Yeah, let me, let me follow up with, with Doug, and we're gonna dig into what the requirement is, and I'll come up with, you know, some, something and bring it back to you.
Sure.
Okay, is there anything else in this staff area that you have feedback on?
The retention one, if we have people saying that you should do whatever your highest is and add one, so our retention is above that ninety percent. So we should probably be raising that.
Yeah, agreed.
I wouldn't say one percent, I'd say you need to go at least to ninety-five.
Ninety-five, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move us on because we have two other areas, and we still have to get to the academic pieces, which are so important. The, the community-focused goal, the targets are centered on numbers of volunteers, and we took off the growing community ed because we're still, you know, you're gonna hear an update on where we are with the community family ed position tonight, but it was kind of a general target anyway. And then I don't, I just, the, the other target here is about the superintendent cabinet members volunteering in the community, and it's, it's kind of just like a check that we all do, and I give you the data of who we all volunteer for, and what boards we serve on, and that kind of thing, but it's not a percentage. So I don't know if you want to look at those, and then the last two, we can just look at these two areas together. The, the financial target is connected to the fund balance, that's a very important one. And then the other one is, I don't know, this one's just about the annual community report being published in January, which we just do, so that one could probably come off.
That's one you just do.
I mean, it's gonna happen, right?
Can I go back to the community members, the volunteers? So again, if we're talking about if we'd meet, if we made a goal, we need to raise that, so it was at or above twenty-five-hundred, and we're now at forty-four-hundred? So if we're looking for growth, then that should probably be increased.
Yeah, because I think when we reported the twenty-three, thirty-five, the board, because that was when we kind of tweaked, that's when you said the twenty-five-hundred, and that's when we got the forty-four.
But I would say, you know, some were above the forty-five-hundred, because I know we're doing a lot of advertising out there, there, there's a lot that's been coming out the last week or two about getting people in team read, that's, you know, whatever other opportunities are out there, so. Maybe Robin could speak to whether, later, Robin, about if we're getting interest. Maybe we don't want to make it, you know, but obviously we want more people involved.
I, I'm fine with that, I think we'll have the, I mean, once we get the numbers from this year, we'll have a more realistic three-year trend that we can, we can, blah.
You know, the, the superintendent cabinet members volunteering in the community, that's gonna happen too, I mean, it, it continues to happen, I mean. I mean, it, it continues to happen, I mean, it's not, it's kind of a funky target because, okay. So I, we're taking it off, but I'm not saying we're not doing it, it's just coming off of this document, yes.
It's just check marks in the box, I would take it off.
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay, so I wanna make sure we have time to get to, um, our, uh, all students are engaged learners. So if you go back to the first page of these documents, right, we look at inclusion rate, we look at access to course offerings, we look at participation in athletics and activities, and then we've got the growth and proficiency targets. So I'm gonna ask this, just based on time, to look at the growth and proficiency targets first, and then we can come back to inclusion and, and the other ones. But you can see, if you look at, please look at version two draft update, and you can kinda compare it to what the original one was. First of all, just formatting-wise, we've got all the targets for elementary on one page, so it's a little bit easier to read. What, what, after just talking with the team and looking through this, what we're really suggesting is that we use MAP or STAR, because as you recall, we're doing the pilot study with STAR assessment this year, that we use MAP or STAR for growth targets and we stick to SBA for proficiency. It's, it gets a little, a little complicated when you've got proficiency targets based on MAP and STAR and SBA. Our state assessment is really the, you know, measure of whether or not students are meeting grade level standards. Growth is extraordinarily important, we have to be assessing kids all throughout the year to make sure they're growing and progressing toward meeting those grade level standards, but ultimately it's the SBA that's measuring student proficiency, so that's what we're suggesting.
So this'll, this'll change, or we would remove some sections from this eventually then?
So if you're looking at version two draft update, it would be, this would be, things have been removed from the, the current one, because we currently have growth and proficiency targets and using, uh, the measures of MAP and SBA. Now, this is one too where the targets, like we're not close, right, to meeting, like our current district-wide performance. Some schools are, right, and so we wanna make sure that they understand you don't set your target based on the district target, cause the district is, we've got schools above and below and everywhere in between. But if you're, you know, with, like the other areas, I could come back with, you know, adjusting that ninety percent of students making expected spring-to-spring growth, because we set it at ninety and it's closer to fifty currently.
Yeah, I mean, I, that, that would be my recommendation, and, and again, to the schools, like, they have their data over the last couple of years, they, they should be setting their goals above what they're reaching, right?
Absolutely.
So schools that are lower are gonna have a little increase over what they did, and the schools that are a lot higher are gonna have the same kind of increase. We don't expect a school, and I'm just, I don't know these numbers, but we don't expect a school that comes back to twenty percent to be at sixty the next year. But can you be at thirty?
Did you say we do have some schools at ninety? Or very, very close? I can't remember the whole.
I would have to go back and look, but I mean, we have schools that are, you know, in the eighties, you know, they're, they're close. So, yeah, we just have to, people just have to understand, I think they do, right, that you set your, you set your school-level target based on where you are currently as a school, not based on where the district is.
And we know, we know there's mitigating factors at every school, where, where they're scoring at, so.
Right. So that, if you wanna look at middle school, uh, again, looking at MAP or STAR for growth. We also do look at S, we have a SBA growth as well, um, actually starting at fifth grade. Just looking at if students are progressing from level one to two, two to three, three to four. Continue to have the, the math target of students earning, percentage of students earning high school credit or higher in grade eight, along with science coming in at grade eight. And then high school's really shifting more toward, uh, grades, passing grades, credit, acquiring credit, earning credit, um, and then the dual credit and graduation. So whatever we adjust with graduation would be adjusted here. And then we shared with you last time at the board meeting, the indicators connected to, um, English language acquisition. And so those are new.
And that's one I wouldn't, I mean, we've only got one year.
Right.
Data, so I wouldn't even try to change that yet.
Well, they seem a little more in line with what's actually, they're not quite so. The disparity between the, the, the goal and reality don't seem to be like.
Right, because we have the data and then we set the target. Based on data, which is the way we should be.
They already had the answers, so it's a lot easier to ask the right questions.
That's exactly correct.
Exactly.
So what I, what I'm hearing is you're good with the MAP and STAR being used for growth, SBA for proficiency primarily, having every, you know, level, elementary, middle, high school on one page. And then resetting the targets to be closer to current reality. And, and then we would look at these on an annual basis.
Yeah, so I was just gonna ask, is this something we can just calendarize annually to just review, like we're, like we did today?
So STAR.
I think so.
This will be the for sure that we'll have complete information on STAR?
And we're, this is the, you know, we're just, we're, we've got schools, we're piloting it, so some schools are using MAP, some schools are using STAR.
So you won't really have full information then, and will next year then be all STAR or, or how long is the pilot?
It depends on the outcome of the pilot study.
See, that's the problem, so, you know, setting things with some buildings and not others. I mean, it's still good to set a, a standard, but you won't have full information yet.
Yeah, there's gonna be a little transition issue.
And by the time they do it next year, they will have changed the test and other things, and the score won't be indicative of the same thing.
Don't say that.
Well, it's always that, they do, I mean, you know, we're like beta testers, right? They'll be changing.
Okay, so just to close the loop on this goal area, and then we'll be about complete here, on inclusion rate, access to course offerings and, uh, participation in extracurriculars, any feedback there?
Inclusion is a statewide goal, right, so that's, that's worth that.
Yep.
Do, for the participating in one athletic activity, we don't have the data after the one year?
We have had a little hiccup in, in how we're collecting that data and how schools are reporting it out, and we're putting a good system in place now, and if we can figure it out, we can retroactively apply it. But we had a hard time recreating the methodology that was used in the twenty-twenty-one school year, and we've had staff changes and so we're not a hundred percent sure on the reliability of that data point in twenty-twenty-one. And we don't wanna keep just reporting something that we're not a hundred percent sure about, so. You've seen data, and we do a report, Matt did the report in the spring, but it's a little hard to call out instances of, like, it, this, it's like each student versus one student participating in multiples.
And we talked about that, yeah.
Cause we have like instances of participation, so we're trying to fuss with it a little bit. We still think it's important because we know that, you know, research does show that students who are engaged in school athletics, engaged in school activities, you know, it, it, it's a good thing and it helps them be academically successful, so we wanna continue to encourage it, we should figure out a better way to report it. And then I should just mention, so it, you don't not see this, but we had on the original document, there was a, um, a target here that said like eighty-five per students would be meeting, eighty-five percent of students are meeting like all the growth and proficiency targets. And I, I did try, and that would be like all of the student data points, like the survey data and all of that. And I tried to aggregate it up, right, in twenty-one, twenty-two, and did come up with a number, but I think it's a meaningless number. And it doesn't, it's kind of goofy, and so.
We went with NA.
I just took, I'm suggesting we take that off and just say, like, look at this, it, we're actually looking at the grade level specific targets. Right, we're not aggregating up a big target because it doesn't make any sense, okay?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I think I have good feedback, uh, I think I have enough to bring back a new iteration for you. I'll get that done and give you time to look at it before the board meeting, give you individual feedback and hopefully it'll be all in a good place where it could be approved in October. Sound good?
Yeah. Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you, that's a lot of work.
For, um, I don't know if the board has really talked about study session agenda for next time, but I know, um, I was gonna suggest, you don't have to decide or anything right now, but, uh, we could bring you some information about our timeline and process. We're looking at the, uh, financial literacy, potential graduation requirement. Get your kind of initial thoughts and input before we really get into moving that work forward. It would be in Oct-, uh, November, isn't that the next study session?
By November, Tom said.
Yeah, I, it's, it's November something.
I'll tell you when.
And there, and it's important, I think we get it in there before the, um, legislative, legislative comes into session in January, cause they're gonna start dropping.
November eighth.
So.
And that's something that I noticed on their agenda.
Yeah, okay, so November eighth would be a good time, sure?
That'd probably be a great time.
Okay, great. All righty. All right, thank you.
Cool.